Our second item of business, the Black Home Initiative presentation. Susan McLean, the Community Development Director, Charles Schaefer, Planning Commission Chair, Daryl Smith, HomeSite Executive Director, and Uche Okezi, HomeSite Director of Real Estate.
Thank you for that introduction. I'm Susan McLean, the Director of Community Development. And I wanted to just as kind of a some back some background on in 2021, the council approved the Housing Action Plan. And since that time, council staff, members of the community, planning commission have been seeking strategies and actions to implement the Housing Action Plan. So in January of this year, the commission invited the Black Home Initiative to present information about that set of initiatives in our region. So subsequent to that, Council Member Hugo Garcia requested a similar briefing to the council on the Black Home Initiative. Thanks for the introduction of our guest presenters from HomeSite. Chair, Planning Commission Chair Charles Schaefer is going to provide a little bit of background in terms of the Planning Commission's perspectives on the initiative.
So as Susan said, we met with the Black Home Initiative in January. We got the presentation that you're about to get. You'll enjoy it. It's a great presentation. Lots of information. Just a couple of highlights from our discussion as a planning commission. Because we really felt that and we unanimously voted to partner with them as a commission. Because we felt that their goals are in line with our both our goals as a planning commission, but also our broader our goals and our vision for the city of Burian. Two things I wanted to highlight from our discussion was that in our city vision, it talks about embracing diversity. You know what better way to embrace diversity than to open up homeownership, which is a unique tie to our community, to diverse individuals. And also, we recognized that people of color have experienced systemic exclusion from homeownership through redlining, through racial covenants, both in Burian and in the broader region. And so we would like as a city to undo some of what has been done in the past. And also, given that, you know, our incorporation, one of the driving factors was that sort of trying to maintain the single family, white neighborhoods we we had had in the past. That was one of the motivating factors behind our incorporation, and we just want to acknowledge that and look forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Daryl and Uche.
Thank you very much. And Mayor Aragon, Deputy Mayor Schilling, and council members, thank you so much for the invitation. It's a pleasure to be here. As our planning commissioner, with your gracious remarks mentioned, we were here in January. It's great to be here again. I am Daryl Smith, Executive Director of HomeSite. Just so you know who we are, we are a thirty-two-year-old community development financial institution. We're a lender of mortgages for people of moderate and low income. We are also a developer. We build affordable homes for homeownership. And we are a place-based community development corporation as well, based in southeast Seattle. Our reach and our work does take us across the state of Washington. I'm joined this evening by Uche Ukeze, the Director of Real Estate Development for HomeSite, and perhaps more importantly, a Burian resident. So we're very happy to be here. Who's advancing the slides this evening, by the way? Oh, thank you. Could we go to the next one? There's our picture there and a little bit about what BHI is. The next slide, please. So how do we get here? This is a really interesting and powerful journey that we've been on. It really started back in March of 2021. We convened the Washington Roundtable, the Washington Mortgage Bankers Association, and others began meeting and talking about a shared vision that came together about a year or so later. So we had a summit to talk about how can we actually increase black homeownership and why is that important essentially for our region? The Center for Community Investment selected Civic Commons to be the convener of a three-year Greater Seattle and wider-than-Seattle effort to really look at this issue. It was a core team put together of seven community leaders in an inaugural meeting. And we met and began looking at how do we develop a plan that would actually get this done, that would move the needle on what we view as a pretty intractable problem that's been around for many, many years, and we'll get into that a little bit. So where we came to is that we wanted to implement the seven-point plan in South Seattle, South King County, and Northern Pierce County, Tacoma. Next slide, please. And so with that was born the Black Home Initiative and implementing this seven-point plan to increase black homeownership in the Puget Sound region. Next slide, please. So here is where we get to the why. And I know it's a little bit hard to read, but I'm going to pull out a couple of highlights here for you. Housing unaffordability disproportionately harms people of color. We know this because the numbers simply don't lie. That's the great thing about data. It's pretty agnostic, right? So Washington homeownership rates are lower for people of color, pretty much across the board. The bottom of the first chart there shows black or African-American at thirty-five percent. It is a plus-two percentage increase since 2010, but it's still only at thirty-five percent compared to about sixty-eight percent in the state of Washington for white families. The next box shows that BIPOC homeownership rates are lower across every income level. So we're not talking about just some of the very low and moderate income folks at every income level. It is lower across the board. And finally, the disparities, really the mark of net worth often is tied up in housing. And this slide shows that the disparities in net worth, forty-two percent and twenty percent of black families, twenty percent of Hispanic families have zero net worth in the state of Washington. That's a staggering number, and that's that's not a show of health in our state at all. Next slide, please. So what is BHI? Essentially, the Black Home Initiative and Connecting Community Capital is a national project, again, put on by the Center for Community Investment that targets racial inequities at the core of the housing ecosystem. That's a big, big concept. And with initial funding from JP Morgan Chase, it's a multi-sector effort that really does apply to how do we get at this? So Seattle is one of six cities chosen in the United States to come up with a plan. Of course, our plan is bigger than Seattle because it really needs to be. Civic Commons is the convening organization, and we're weaving across different sectors to actually achieve our shared goal. And the next slide, please. We are implementing a strategy. It's a shared priority. We're developing a pipeline. We'll talk about that in a moment. And we're really changing the enabled the enabling environment to get toward a goal. And that goal is, in the next three to five years, we would like to build, develop, source, encourage fifteen hundred new black homeowners between South Seattle and Northern Pierce County. And in a five-to-ten-year period after, we want to double that number. So three to five years, fifteen hundred, then an additional fifteen hundred in the ensuing five years. The next slide, please. So what are the line of sight? What is it that we're all working toward? Again, we want the opportunity for all to own a home and to have the potential benefits of that asset. And we want that to be available to low and moderate income, black homeowners who desire it. The geographic focus I've mentioned, South Seattle, all the way down to the Tacoma area. The key performance indicator are the number of new black homeowners who have the appropriately affordable mortgage and safe, durable, healthy homes. And ultimately, the desired impact is the reduction of racial inequality and an increase in intergenerational household wealth. That gets back to that number of folks, both in our Hispanic community and our African-American community, that have zero net worth in the state of Washington. It's a staggeringly high number. And the next slide, please. As I mentioned, our shared line of sight, ten years from now, we want to see three thousand new black, low and moderate income homeowners. Five years from now, fifteen hundred is our goal. Two years from now, we have a strongly aligned impact network. And I'll talk a little bit about that because, again, how is this going to be different from what we've seen in the past? That's where the impact network comes into play. And in place right now, we have a very strong core team of individuals who are advisors, organizations supporting the effort, including thankfully so the Burian Planning Commission. Thank you very much again for your support. And we'll move to the next slide. And I'm going through these quickly because there may be some questions and it's a lot of information. This slide, and this this will be made available for council members and electeds who may desire to look into it. But it just shows who our core team members are. We cut across sector. We have folks like Andrea Copain, CEO of Bird Bar Place. We have Gordon McHenry, CEO of United Way, King County. We have Michelle Meriwether, the CEO of the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle, myself, and others that are working on this effort as sort of advisors. And the next slide. Here's where we get to it. So sounds good, right? Sounds like a good idea. But how is this going to be different from past attempts and past efforts? We know that the numbers in terms of homeownership are staggering. Last, about a year ago, I sat on a task force emboldened by the legislature with which looked at homeownership disparity rates across the state of Washington. And they are, the Gulf is gigantic, all right? So what is going to be different now than it's gotten us here to the situation we're currently faced? So the next slide, please. And one more after that, if you will. So here's why it's different. This is where the network comes into play. So this is really hard to read, but I'll talk to you about just a couple of pieces here. Here are the basic threes. Increase the supply of affordable homes for purchase. We need to increase the supply of housing, the types of housing across this geographic area. We need to increase the number of new mortgage-ready black households and sustain them, especially for existing households as well. We know that the pandemic and we know that the Great Recession back in two thousand eight-nine, many members of the community, African-American, Hispanic, and otherwise, lost homes. That is, that is a loss of net wealth that can be transferred to generations. That means that college educations don't get paid for. That means new businesses aren't started. It's it increases the Gulf in terms of racial equity and the racial wealth gap. The third piece is we need to increase community engagement and align all of these actions. This is how we make this network supercharged. This is how we get to increasing the buildable land inventory, increasing funding for building, diversity of production. We need to look at improving outreach and support for those potential buyers. We need to improve the lending practices and products. Get into lending, absolutely find the right types of mortgages, the right types of down payment assistance. We need to also increase and help black-led developers and CBOs align philanthropy, align practices and policies, and increase incentives and collaboration. We need to give folks a reason why to come into the network. That's why this is so different from what's gone on in the past. We've never had an effort like this before where you have the Washington Association of Realtors coming behind this effort, individual organizations, nonprofits, philanthropy, the Mortgage Bankers Association, nonprofit lenders like HomeSite and other developers, all coming together to say, this is an intractable problem. We need to behave differently, which is engaging in a network effort to really close the gap. And the really great news about it is if we can figure this out for those individuals in the community, African-American community, Hispanic community, but especially the black community, where the Gulf is largest, the side benefits for the wider community are there as well. Because if you can make a difference here, we're going to see benefits for everyone. That's just the simple truth. And the next slide, please. So one thing we talk about a lot at BHI is that homeownership is not an event. I used to be a real estate broker with Windermere for about fifteen years in southeast Seattle. And even my thinking has changed on this because I used to work with people and sometimes they'd be mortgage-ready to go buy that weekend. Sometimes I'd work with a couple or a family or an individual and it might take a year. So we have to recognize that homeownership is not an event. It's a journey. So the next slide, there's our journey slide, and it looks a little bit like this. And the recognition that the the network sort of says is, we need to walk that path with folks. We can't just say, hey, if you're not ready, sorry. We actually have to create more of a guided pathway to get people to the next level. And the next slide. So here's how this works. Outreach and education leading to pre-purchase counseling, incredibly important. My organization, HomeSite, does pre-purchase homeownership counseling. We have classes. We have two HUD certified counselors on staff. If we get folks at the front end with pre-purchase counseling, then we have to make sure that there are affordable home loan products available for them. So we're getting much more creative about lending. Regular commercial financial institutions are doing the same. We're all leaning in in this direction. Then, once that home is purchased, we need to absolutely make sure that there's post-post purchase support as well, including anti-foreclosure prevention. So if we can follow this pathway, we can actually create homeownership opportunities for the community, for the African-American community most especially, and making sure that they can stay in those homes is incredibly important as well. Next slide, please. So this is really important. We love this this sort of cartoon graphic here because readiness really does matter. And the timing really does matter in terms of loan underwriting. Because often what happens here is folks get curious. You know, everyone can go online and, you know, look at Redfin or whatever, look at real estate online. And folks may immediately go and apply for credit, and they might not get a good answer, right? What we want to actually do is walk that path that we showed earlier. Make sure that there's suitability there, provide them with all of the pre-purchase support and counseling, talk them about reducing debt, improving credit, looking at income, making sure they're ready through homeownership education, and then apply for credit. And then all of a sudden, the numbers of accepted, right, those acceptance certificates that allow you to go shopping for your first home perhaps, will up our game, right? So we need to stop having people just immediately go without some of those supports around. It's fine if you're ready. You go online, you get approved by, you know, Rocket Mortgage, and you're ready to shop. Terrific. Good for you. We know that what has happened a lot in the black community historically is that if you look at some of our frankly, large financial institutions, the turn-down rate is way higher than it should be. And we know that if we can do some interventions beforehand, walk the path with folks, we can create a much wider pool of of ready buyers that are really prepared, that understand how their mortgage works, that have the right type of mortgage, the right-sized mortgage, and we can have success. Next slide, please. So capturing those interested households, we're going to find folks that, as I mentioned here, are ready to go right away. We're going to have some folks that are midterm-ready and people that are going to take a lot longer. And what we want to say to them is, not now, but at some point, as opposed to no, which has traditionally happened, and that discourages people. People start thinking, you know, this is never going to work for me. I'm never going to be able to own a home. You know, my parents never owned a home. My grandparents never owned a home. We need to stop that type that type of thinking by creating more of those opportunities and helping buyers along that path towards success. Next slide, please. Talked about walking along sides. We're going to skip to the next one. And talk a little bit more detailed now about pipelines. So again, if we think about South Seattle all the way to Northern Pierce County, we need to actually create a pipeline of homes that will be available for purchasers who we are walking that path with and getting them ready. So here's a couple of examples of pipeline that we're already thinking about. Habitat for Humanity has forty total homes. This is potential in Burian, by the way, because I know that Burian as a city has some homeownership goals, and I applaud that. That's fantastic. EcoThrive has twenty-six total homes that will be coming online at some point here. Uche and I are very aware that here we sit in this fantastic kind of Burian town square. There's a transit center site, which I think is adjacent to where we're sitting right now. I asked Uche to do some back-of-the-napkin, quick developer, you know, how many units could be developed in a place like that town center? That that particular lot that I believe is owned by King County Metro, that could potentially lead yield that maybe up to a hundred and twenty new homes for for residents here in Burian. So increasing housing supply is key for us. So we focus just here in Burian. But again, we're talking about South Seattle where our offices are. Uche and I are working on developing a limited equity co-op, sixty-eight units of shared equity housing for new homeowners. That will be part of this pipeline. And we need to think about what that pipeline is going to look like all the way to Northern Pierce County. Because as we source and find these potential new homeowners, they need a place to buy, right? And as we, you know, you may have noticed, real estate here in Western Washington, even with interest rates climbing, we have a gigantic shortage of housing in Seattle and south, all the way to Tacoma. So we need to produce a lot more units. And here, Burian can certainly play a major role in that in that effort. Next slide, please. This is just a rendering of what we call ulo, which means to gather in the Coast Salish language. This is the limited equity co-op, and I have to be completely transparent and say that Uche is developing. I just get to talk about it. She's the brains behind all of this. But this is going to be an example of the type of housing that is really needed in southeast Seattle. It's adjacent to our light rail station. So you don't necessarily have to have a car. There'll be bike parking here. It's going to be gorgeous. It's going to look and feel pretty much like a condominium, except it's a cooperative. There aren't many co-ops here in the Puget Sound region, if on the west coast at all. And this shared equity housing allows an entry point for a lower moderate income individual or family to own something, to own shares in the cooperative that can be passed down to an heir, that can be sold on the market, so they can build generational wealth for their family. They can stay in this home until they until they die. It's theirs. But it's a different housing type. So again, we're not talking just about condominiums or townhomes. We're talking about limited equity co-ops. We're talking about the model that Habitat for Humanity does, that sort of sweat equity housing. We're talking about lots of different housing types that suit different types of individuals and families. And next slide. Areas of opportunity in BHI: land, policies, regulations, incentives, funding. And we are, of course, looking for BHI partners. And again, as we're so happy to report that the Planning Commission has has joined on as a supporter. We are working in all of these areas, and we invite different organizations and individuals to join with us in any one of these areas of opportunity. There's a lot brewing right now at the legislature with some votes coming up on some important pieces of legislation that will help us to increase both on the supply side and the demand side of housing. Because the goal here is to create homeowners. Especially because Washington State, unfortunately, like a lot of places across the country, has a rather checkered history. In fact, we know that government, in many instances, helped cause the problem, as was mentioned earlier. This is need needing to be recognized, that government actually helped to cause some of the gaps we see today. It just kind of continued up through the generations in the wrong direction. So we're working in behalf of correcting something that happened in the past, but really benefiting all of us. Because as I mentioned, people that own homes start businesses, send kids to college. People who own homes can survive a catastrophic medical emergency because of something called equity. And most importantly, that wealth can be passed on to generations. Last slide. We need to meet the moment. Right now, there's tremendous momentum going on here in the state of Washington and across the country. That's the reason why JP Morgan Chase has pledged, I believe the number is fifteen billion toward racial equity across the country. Some of those funds are coming right here to the Puget Sound region, so we need to take advantage of that and meet the moment in time that's happening now where there's momentum to really make a change in terms of growing homeownership for the black community because we'll see so many side benefits. And it's incredibly important to correct harms of the past, which I think we widely acknowledge have happened. And the last slide. By changing the systems that are long overdue, that need to be changed, we can provide the type of resources and overcome all of the disparities that unfortunately plague the state of Washington. We're not alone there. It's an infamous club to be a member of, but they're particularly bad here in Washington State. And so we are looking at systems change work here. That's the level we're working at by coming together as a network. And we sure hope that the city of Burian will take interest in this work. We're thrilled about your housing policies. We think they're going the right direction. We'd love to speak with you further about that wonderful transit development site adjacent to here. We'd love to help you with that in any ways you may be thinking. But let's create some housing and create some homeowners, particularly in the black community where the need is so great and where the harm has frankly also been great. We have an opportunity here in front of us, coming together as a network to make a real difference. Questions? Can I answer any questions at all? Or more importantly, can Uche, who is an actual developer, who has many, many years' experience, if you have particular questions about your TOD site and ideas there, or our limited equity co-op, we'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you for that presentation. I just want to start by saying that not only was that a fantastic presentation, but you all clearly have done incredibly impressive work here. And I think that we, I would like to do anything and everything we can from the city's perspective to partner with you for the future. Because not only are you touching on a geographic region that makes a lot of sense for improving the supply and growing the supply of housing, but the disparities and the inequities there are striking and need to be resolved and corrected. I have a couple of questions on from myself. I think the the idea of homeownership for all is just, I mean, this is this is fantastic. I'm just really inspired by your presentation and the work you've done and want to I want to bring you in to to Burian to do it with us. I have a couple of questions about some of the points you mentioned about where where these things get stuck. The first, and I know about the the down payment assistance program from the Washington State Housing Finance Committee Commission. What's your relationship with them? Do you do work with them? Because I know lots of folks who have taken advantage of that program in Pierce County, Tacoma, to get condos as a starter home. And so I'm just curious what your relationship with them is.
Yes, we are a correspondent lender with the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. So we run two of well-loved programs, the House Key and Home Advantage Program with the Washington State Commission. So we do a tremendous amount of business using their money to create homeowners. And again, for HomeSite as a as a CDFI lender, we only serve people that make eighty percent or less of area median income. So if you can play in the regular market, great, go get a loan with Chase and congratulations. But we we're serving the community that that is low and moderate income. So those loans and that partnership with the Washington State Housing Finance Commission are really geared toward folks that make eighty percent AMI. We can go a little higher on certain programs. We also do a tremendous amount of down payment assistance, depending on where the resident is. We have lots of different flavors of down payment assistance. One of our favorites that we use across the state of Washington is called the Social Justice Down Payment Assistance Program. Ten thousand dollars, no interest, no payment for thirty years or until the home is sold or refinanced. So as a lender, working in partnership with the commission, our job is to try to find and partner and bring in as much DPA or down payment assistance as we can fit for that particular purchaser. Playing in the market here in Western Washington, as as many of you probably know, is really challenging. It's very, very difficult based on income. So we really rely on the programs in partnership with the commission.
And certainly, the point you were talking about, just the supply needing to increase and improve dramatically. I'm I'm glad that the city's supported House Bill eleven-ten, and we were one of the few cities that have done that and were were in support of that at the legislature. So a missing middle will be huge. But my my second and last question for you is about your relationship with real estate agents. So like my friends that I know who were able to qualify and use the Washington State Housing Finance program for down payment assistance only knew about it because their real estate agent knew about it. So they kind of got lucky. They certainly didn't look like they didn't know to look into it. It was their real estate agent who knew. So what's your relationship like with the real estate agencies around the Puget Sound and getting information shared that way?
Yeah, it's it's good, but it needs to increase, frankly. We do a lot of work with brokers who know about what HomeSite has to offer. But as far as BHI is concerned, we've done a pretty big outreach effort with two organizations. One is the Washington State Association of Realtors. I spoke with them just the other day. The Realtors have come on as a supporter of BHI, which is fantastic.
Right.
We also are in partnership with NAREB, which is the National Association of Real Estate Brokers. That is the historic African-American and and people of color, real estate professionals that are not part of the NAR. They're another association, but they have a presence here in Western Washington. In fact, their president will be here next week. She's like, hey, a lot of stuff's going on in 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 the Puget Sound area. I got to get out there and see what's happening. So we do have good relationships with the Realtors. Our job at BHI is to just spread the word and let Realtors know that that these opportunities are available. Because what we think is going to happen with BHI is that we will attract more funding. We will start to change and win have some wins in the legislature, middle housing that you you mentioned is, thank you for supporting that. That's really hugely important. So the real estate community is a really key partner. And most important, we need to create the housing so that the brokers are there representing the buyers that can then get in.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Garcia has his hand up. And you're muted.
Thank you. I saw some questions. First, I want to say thanks for that presentation. I got I I caught closes of it and to the commission is why I asked to have it shared with us as well. Thank you for for what you're doing. It's super important work. I've worked in banking and finance. I've taken part in some of the pre-approval classes to actually acquire the home that I'm in and worked during the banking crisis of two thousand eight to two thousand twelve and dealing with trying to keep people housed. So getting this information is critical. I love this partnership. Like some Deputy Mayor Schilling, any way that we can partner with you would be fantastic. The questions I have are, I guess, a couple for Uche and one for you, Executive Director for Uche's, the are are you familiar with the Twelfth Avenue Commons, the housing development that has multi-use event space underneath?
Yes, that's with
housing.
That's
Okay, good.
Roots housing.
Correct, correct. At previous council meetings, we when we had our economic development manager, we asked, you know, for We asked, you know, for there to be some sort of outreach to that org. Or for and when it comes to the communication to the county on the metro site for them to to consider that type of space. Because we know we have a designation of an arts district here in Burian. We have a multiple organizations that could use that that space as a economic driver. But also to support the additional housing above and. The creative economy and and artists as well, since we have a very creative and artist led community. So would love to have any sort of support in. Maybe starting some sort of partnership to get your feedback or a consultation. On the best use of that of that site and making sure that King County is aware of, you know, this data, which I'm. Sure they have to a certain extent. So that's one item. Would there be possibilities to support that type of consultation with the county and look at that particular site?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. And then. The home that I got was a duplex and as counsel deputy Schilling said, missing middle's hot topic. Has the BHI had any thoughts or any projects into how they're going to incorporate? The initiatives into multifamily housing for homeownership, not for investment. As more and more of our. Neighbors look to increase housing stock and how missing middle seems to be something that will likely help that in the near future. Is that something that you guys have incorporated or already have people that have taken part of programs and bought multifamily duplexes or?
Yeah, that's a that's a great question, council member, and and certainly BHI is is really thinking as broadly as possible about. Types of housing, because we recognize that there there's going to be a desire out there for some folks can be very comfortable with. Multifamily living, some folks can be more interested in townhomes or cottages. So I think we need to have a. Sort of an all approach. Everything is available and possible, depending on what the site is. You know, terrific for you to to be able to get into a duplex. That's that's fantastic. We also want to look at. Some of the things that, you know, the middle housing bill is 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 looking at as well. So how about, you know, ADUs, detached accessory dwelling units? There's lots of different housing types that we need to really be thinking about in this effort from South Seattle all the way to Tacoma. And I want to go back to your 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 prior question. I think that's a great ask and a great example. Twelfth Avenue Arts, I'm very familiar with that. That development is quite successful in the Capitol Hill neighborhood in Seattle. And as it turns out, Community Roots Housing is a development partner of Homeside as well. So we we know those folks very well. We happy to. Make some connections there. So you could get some some advice and counsel about your site as well.
Uh, great. I'll 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 defer my my next last question if we have more time and defer to Mary Sophia Aragon. Thank you.
Uh, oh, Mary Argon, your hands up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I also really appreciate this presentation. The data is always worth revisiting. There's a lot of misconceptions out there about who is affected. So I thought that was. Very effective and you mentioned the importance of generational wealth and. The equity people gain can put their children through school, but also say the opposite, the on the other side of the spectrum, I know. From watching my parents, it also supported their retirement as. Incomes are really limited at that point and inflation increase and comes rises. Tools like reverse mortgages that are available to people who actually own homes, I think is really critical. There was a mention in the agenda bill, and this is more for staff as there's. It mentions a partnership between the planning commission and your organization and which I think is a very positive thing. Clearly, there's support all around and just wanting to hear more about what that might look like. As we are looking at the landscape and seeing what can be done in Burian.
I think I think the BHI is pretty clearly consistent with the goals of the Housing Action Plan. Also with our equity goals in the city. In general, I think there's a number of initiatives that Burian is taking on, which will definitely support. One part of the goal, which is to increase the supply of potential homes that can be owned. We're doing that through a number of initiatives right now, including the zoning related to M-Bon Boulevard Park. The Housing Demonstration Program, looking at an expansion of MFTE. Looking at downtown zoning, getting into miss missing middle housing, the from a couple of years ago, our ADU revisions. All those things are in support of sort of that supply side. From a council standpoint, council definitely can speak to on behalf of City of Burian government, but. I think to partner would could be quite simple and it could involve endorsing the principles of the black homeownership home initiative. And then basically directing staff in the planning commission to support strategies that move toward. BHI related efforts over time. So to me, it the partnership, I think, is sort of encapsulated by those two. Endorsing those principles and then directing staff where possible to support those strategies.
That that's exactly right. And what we would commit to as an organization, should you choose to to take that direction through vote or resolution or 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 whatever you'd like to do. You know, we will add you now be a partner. So we would periodically send information to staff and. Keep you updated on on efforts and successes, because I think, you know, success breeds success. We want to. Get to that pipeline. We want to show that we're making progress and frankly, what it ultimately comes down to is fifteen hundred new homeowners. And you would be part of that and a really important part of that as well. So I think there's a lot we can do to provide information back on how we're doing periodically. Love to come back and give you an update a year from now and say, hey, we've made this kind of progress.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sarah.
Thank you so much. This this is one of the most energizing and exciting presentations I've seen in a long time and and. I would also like to express a really strong interest in in partnering ship partnering into the future and seeing your successes. And the questions I have are are kind of in. In in the understanding that this is going to succeed. You have a really strong plan and and moving forward. And having some home ownership. I have a couple of questions about the support of homeowners after they're in housing. We have heard from a lot of people in neighborhoods here in Burian that have. I guess kind of endemic issues that are. Harmful to their homes. There's there's Boulevard Park is particularly in my mind where there's flooding. There are people who are having difficulty living in their houses because of. Issues with flooding, with the non-septic systems and so forth. And and I guess the question is, is there support? After the homeownership with the issues that come with homeownership and there's always issues that come with homeownership.
Yeah, true. No doubt. I think where we're focusing our time in terms of that post. Homeownership journey is has really been around what we're seeing on the anti foreclosure work. COVID has really exposed, I think, for for all of us in in the community. What can happen when people lose income and head toward foreclosure, just anecdotally, homesite. For the state of Washington ran the Homeownership Assistance Fund last year. We had seventy five saves. These are homes that are at a notice of trustees sale, at a sheriff's sale essentially. And we were able to pull those homes back and keep those families in the homes. What we recognize going forward and what's part of BHI is. Being much more robust about that pre-purchase counseling and anti foreclosure work. We just don't want families. That make that success to be taken to the brink because of some event or the economy. So if they have information on who to call. When I start feeling like something might be going wrong, that alone is incredibly important. We have a the Washington State Emergency. Number for all housing related issues. And to your point about things that can happen environmentally with the home or. Just homes that, you know, need repair. This also needs to be a part of the conversation and I think some of that really comes in. I was working for a bunch of years and. You know, first you need really good builders on the one end of it and also you need information for homeowners to know that they're not alone. That there are people they can talk to to get information to keep themselves out of falling into a situation where the home can be lost. Either because of, you know, physical nature or unfortunately finances. And we've seen a lot of that. Especially during COVID, it's been really, really difficult. We had a, as I say, seventy five saves last year. We'll be doing the program again this year. But there's a lot we need to do on the front end, making sure people are prepared.
My second question, thank you. But my second question had to do with some of the programs for homeownership that are. I think I think Habitat for Humanity may be one, and I'm pretty sure EcoThrive that are the the home. Purchases permanently affordable to. How how does the equity building process for the the owner of that home work?
So there are a couple of really well regarded programs. You've mentioned two of them. Habitat for Humanity certainly is is well regarded across the globe. And here locally, they do a great job as well. We work really closely with Habitat, Seattle King County, Island Counties. Pierce County as well. We fund a lot of the mortgages for their buyers and they're doing sweat equity. These buyers are going through a program. And these homes are permanently affordable. The limited equity co-op that Uche is building as well is really geared toward permanent affordability so that. To buy into that cooperative, you have to be making eighty percent area median income or less. When you go to sell your shares, should you choose to do so, also because of the way the documents are put together. It has to be sold to an affordable buyer. So we're really concerned about permanent affordability in in as we recycle, if you will, homes to the next community. So you still can pull your equity out, but we're creating missing rungs of the ladder, because what's happened here in Puget Sound, if you think about the ladder effect. We've knocked out the first five rungs and you're just supposed to be able to jump to run 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 six. We need the first two or three rungs. You know, my daughter's twenty six. She lives in Brooklyn, New York. We'd love to have her maybe move back to Seattle one day. How's she gonna do that with five missing rungs? So the permanent affordability is really, really important. So a lot of the projects build that in, such as our limited equity co-op. Many of the pipeline projects we're talking about, including Habitat and our land trusts, which do a great job as well. Our models where permanent affordability is built in. Doesn't mean that that homeowner, when they sell, doesn't get to make some equity and some money. It just means that the mathematical calculation allows for the next family to have an opportunity at the first rung as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Jimmy, Councilmember Jimmy Mata.
All right. Well, first of all, thank you very much for the presentation. I think that really articulated the challenges that we have in our communities. I would love to continue to have the conversation. I've got several ideas, questions. I think you made my. Intellect pop in and say, how can we make this expand, right? I know we have several areas. In the city of Burian, not only are that are privately owned. Some of it is public. Obviously, we've talked about the county spot and we've there's been several ideas of what 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 could happen there. But you know, I think the future development that I see is developments like the Centro de la Raza where. You know, you have a plaza where people can gather and get to know each other. And so I see something like that when it comes to public property. I always, you know. Would like to see something like that, right? If it's private, you know, obviously, it's how can you get to the deal? On top of that, I think that also, you know, as I look at the numbers of our baby boomers continuing to have the majority of the wealth in. My generation, I'm the forgotten generation, really don't matter. I'm an exer, but the generation is coming right after mine, which is the millennial and the Z generation. I do believe that even in the Latino community, in the African American community, we have sometimes families that. We have multi-generational families living there. And so as I was growing up, I got to see a lot of failure. Because, you know, a child turns eighteen, he's no longer a child, they graduate high school, they can't go to college, they have to be within that vicious circle and the cycle. And so the cycle just ends up eating them up. So like to see as we move forward is what kind of housing can we have for individuals that either go into college? Or that turn eighteen, they're gonna go to college where we can keep it affordable so they can continue their education. On top of that, if they choose a trade school. Right to where you know that there's eight periods within apprenticeship programs, you know that after the fourth or third year, you're gonna economically. Climb that ladder to almost make it to buy a home, right? And I think what you've just articulated with the five steps. This is very true. And so I'd like to see also with the partnership as we move forward here is that we have more workshops. Because I do think that the power of education is important to be able to understand, number one, why are we here? Where are we going? And continue to build our community as we move forward. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And again, Darrell, I appreciate your presentation tonight.
Thank you very comments, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mata and Councilmember Citymore.
Hey, first off, I want to thank you for all the incredible work that you're doing and thank you for reaching out to Burian to become a partner. I want to echo what my fellow councilmembers have said that I am fully interested in doing whatever we can to support your initiative to support. Your mission here. I would love to have staff in our planning commission send something back to council, tell us what we need to do to. Give the go ahead on this. Anything that we can do. I am fully in favor of. You mentioned doing things like. I think workshops or classes, things like that. I'm wondering if we can host informational meetings, any kind of workshops, classes here in town. Anything that our our city can partner to do to help support that kind of thing. If you need. You know, connections with local Realtors, I'm more than happy to drop a couple of lines your way to connect you, because I know some who would love. Love to be looped in with what you have going on. Yeah, I mean, that that's really it. I think that you've gone in great depth, answered a lot of questions here tonight and I'm just. So excited to see you taking interest here and to see the potential, not just for. The short term future and how we benefit our community, but also the long term, talking about how. When you're looking at equity in the future, how it rolls over, I think that's incredible and. Building that and compounding that equity. Is something that we need to see more in our community. So I'm just. Just want to echo my support and and say, please reach out, anything that we can do. Please, our planning commission and our staff are always incredible to work with and. I hope that they will bring anything and everything our way that we can do to help support any effort ongoing, so.
Thank you so very much, council member. And in fact, we have a outreach and engagement. Piece of BHI that's specifically set up to do that outreach and make those connections and make sure that as we're able to, you know. Have stories and peripherals and hand out things and let the real estate community know and just the community in general know, whether it's churches. You know, or wherever folks gather, that's that's what that effort's all about, to let the community know that there are some opportunities here. So we appreciate that offer.
That's fabulous. I I would love to see us host some events here, some informational events. We we have a really engaged community here and there are a lot of. Organizations, nonprofits, churches that I think would be very, very eager to work with you. Even this space, this is our community meeting space. We do city events, library events, all kinds of things here. You know, it's a centralized space and if you hosted any kind of informational class or workshop, I'm sure we could pack the house, you know, so. Anything, anything and everything we can do, I'm happy to give you my information so I can personally help, you know. Connect you with any nonprofits or organizations I can think of. Our our staff is very, very good at doing that as well, though. We we do try and stay interconnected with our community, but. I'm just I'm just thrilled and I want to see you connected as much as possible, because I want as many people to know that this is going on and to benefit it and. To help serve your organization and do whatever they can to help your mission become accomplished, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And let's make sure we follow up with with them in whatever way we need to follow up with them and create. Create these strategic partnerships, because I don't want to drop the ball on this one.
Deputy Mayor.
Oh, Mayor, yeah, Mayor Argon.
Well, and I just did a little bit more thinking in terms of what I would be hoping to see when we talk about planning commission and partnership with this organization. Because the organization has a pretty large geographic reach between South Seattle and Pierce County, which is wonderful. But I think historically about how moderate and low income housing could be on land, that's problematic. Because it doesn't have the infrastructure there to support a lot of density. And so. What I would like to see as we get information and if down the line, we're talking about planning for communities, I think mixed use is great. From my, from my observation, being on the Burian City Council, mixed use seems to go up a lot faster. And it can generate a lot of activity that brings people together as well as economic growth. But when there's some parts of the city that still need their infrastructure addressed for that density. And so I would like to make sure that those things are highlighted when projects are proposed, because like council member. Sarah said, we're learning a lot about gaps that people have in certain areas of the city and. Not addressing that for people of moderate means is perpetuating inequities. So that's something that I would like to watch for as we move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to address that really quick. Uh, and I just wanted to say to Mary Aragon, thank you for that comment. Uh, even as we're talking right now about our Ambon Boulevard Park plan, uh, we've been looking at infrastructure. Uh, obviously the flooding issues, we've been uh concerned about sidewalks. So definitely with any development, we're taking that into account.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure you'll be hearing from us more. Uh, you've heard a very supportive and interested council.